I saw some emails going back and forth about questions. So my question continues to be, we spoke before the May 18 meeting. When you first, when it was first advertised that the board would move executive, or I'm sorry, move public participation after executive session. I think I shared my concerns at that time with you directly. Have you received conversations in the opposite to that?
Any to the opposite?
I was curious as though if, if you and I spoke and I shared why I was concerned about doing that, why we're still doing.
Well, when I moved it, I moved it because of the business of the board needs to be done in a timely manner. And it's just like the meeting on the 18th. I believe we had four, yes, speakers, but we were still here till 11:30. And I've voiced my concerns with meetings. And dialogue that lasts longer than three hours, the members focus gets
Certainly.
lost. So I would like to get all the business of the board done prior to having a late night.
I understand that. My only concern with that is then we're asking people who have, by our policy, have to turn in their names prior to the board meeting for the agenda. And then we would be asking those members, if we were in executive session till that kind of hour, to stay, members of the community, to then be staying till that hour of the evening for public participation. So they might show up at 6:30, have to turn in their names for a desire to address the board, and then potentially be staying by your own timeline till that hour, when we only had four to begin with, which would have been 12 minutes total with our three-minute timer.
Well, I believe we take applications to speak all the way up until we open up public participation.
No, I don't think so. Mr. Jenkins, can you clarify? We only take applications to speak until the beginning of the meeting. So if, if we were to do that, we're having members of the public wait for five hours. I would hate to also then cut an executive session short, wanting to come back out to have public participation, and that would seem to be confusing. Again, I know we're only on item four this evening, but we had talked about that before, and I just wondered if you had gotten information from other board members articulating their desire to see it moved to the end.
The only board member that I've heard on the subject would be you. And I believe I've only had either three or four emails from the public
Okay.
encounter of moving it until after.
Mr. President, if I could, I would concur with Mr. Fuji on this issue. I think it's moving the public participation end of the meeting. It's a bad look. We're in a time right now where the government, depending, it could be federal, state, local, whoever, there are issues with open and obviousness of how the government is behaving. And certainly, I think this is just a bad look in general, holding it at the end like this. It looks like we're trying to hide. Perhaps we're not. I mean, we may have a legitimate reason to do so. But I think just from the, just from the optics of it right away, it's not a good luck. I don't think it, it does well for us. It certainly doesn't do well for our clients, who are the general public and the, and the students who we represent. As, you know, Mr. Fuji pointed out, we had four members discuss, that's 12 minutes. That doesn't take much of our time at all. I think we should address public concerns right away, get it out of the, get it out of the way, let them speak their piece, and we can move on. Plus, it may help with the furtherance of the meeting as we go along. So I think it's really important to have that public participation right away versus, versus doing it at the end of the meeting. It just doesn't, it just doesn't feel like the right thing to do.
I have no opinion either way.
It would seem to me if, that I would move, let's see here, how do we do it? A motion happened, discussion is occurring, we're talking about the agenda as printed. So it would have to be a motion within this motion to move public participation back to where it originally used to sit after the board, actually, I don't even recall, I can look at the minute. It used to sit after board member item of interest, or it used to sit after
Well, if the, if the, go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, I looked at the last one or two, it looked like it was right after the, the board member.
Board members item of interest.
Yeah.
As we look at the minutes from previous meetings.
Mr. Jenkins, how many do we have this evening? One?
Public participation is for the public to bring concerns to the board.
Agreed.
Part of the argument here is, or some in the emails I received, was that we, if it's at the end of the meeting, the board can't address topics brought up in public participation. But we don't anyway.
Right. So there's a little bit of a misunderstanding about what the purpose of public participation is, is that what you're saying?
That would be
And, and I don't dispute that. I'm just saying that, that to wait for the conversation of public participation until a later hour doesn't seem to make sense to me. And, and again, to be fair, I articulated that in a conversation that we had before, and that's why I was asking the question, if you had gotten information to the contrary.
So have you made a motion?
Yes, Mr. President, I would move that public participation be moved back to where it normally sits on the agenda, which is after board member item of interest, prior to business
Second. Now, do we also have, just that?
We have to vote on that motion first.
Okay.
And then we can vote on the motion. We're letting Darren touch it.
I understand.
I have a motion by Mr. Fuji and a second by Mr. Smith to move public participation back to its original spot on the agenda. Meaning that it will be, depending on how the agenda comes out, it will be item number, I'm trying to find it.
For the purpose
Nine point one.
Well, yeah, it'll be, it'll be somewhere between nine and 10. And then we'll start a business item. So have I, have I captured it correctly? Is there one, okay, that's what I was waiting on. Okay, so. Are we ready? Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
No.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
And would you like that effective?
Oh, yeah, so I, I think as, as we're looking at removing 10.8, the motion was to move it that way for this agenda.
Okay. Question?
And, and before you officially adopt the agenda, I just want to point out one slight change to 10.1, the fees, there was an error with, or incorrect information with what you originally had, what's on here now is correct, but the fees for the AP tests were listed as $94, it's actually 97. So that has been corrected, but I want to make sure you're aware of that, because if you looked at it yesterday, it was 94. And that was the reason for the change.
Alrighty.
So we have a, we had a motion on the floor that was made by Mr. Fuji and seconded by Mrs. Nix to approve the agenda. Well, it would be as amended now, would be the appropriate thing. So does that still stand? We still okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
And would that be as amended to take out 10.8 as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I have, the two things I have are moving 10.8 to June 29, and then moving the executive session back to its original spot.
And the
Public participation.
Public participation, I'm sorry.
And just for the, the record itself, if anybody has an old copy of the attachment, it's $97 AP versus 90.
Okay, we ready?
Yep.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Item five, it was recommended the board approve the minutes of the May 18, 2023 regularly scheduled meeting and the May 24 and June 8, 2023 special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I noted that on the May 18 meeting, it didn't have the time of adjournment. On the May 24 meeting, it didn't have the time of adjournment, and it didn't have us coming back out of exec. And on the 6/8, it didn't have the adjourn time. Those corrections made. When they can get the recording to back up the times. Was there any other things that needed to be addressed in the meeting minutes? When you're ready, Darren.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Item six, superintendent's report.
Good evening. Before I get started with my update on the enrollment growth, I want to make sure I extend my congratulations to two of our track athletes. Senior Macy Ames was a state qualifier in the pole vault, and junior Megan Stevens was not only a qualifier in the high jump, but actually placed eighth in the state, so medaled, got on the podium. Congratulations to her. We will invite them to a later board meeting, but wanted to make sure I started out my superintendent's report recognizing those two individuals for their accomplishments, as well as their hard work and dedication to get to that point. The bulk of my update this evening will be on the enrollment growth in the district. And just want to start with a little bit of historical perspective. An enrollment study was conducted by an organization called Future Think. There was a study conducted in 2015. I was here for that, I recall that. And then another one in 2019. And then my guess is, based on the results of the 2019 study, a separate report, or a separate study process was conducted, referred to as the Cropper Report, and this was the process of looking at redistricting the elementary boundaries. Now, some of the information that I am going to show or, or present to you is the information that those before me had at their disposal. So based on the information they had at the time, is why they planned for and perhaps made some of the decisions that they did. What I, what I'm going to show this evening, and again, as concisely as I can, is the growth that we were originally informed was coming in 2015, although we have in fact grown, we have not grown by the amounts and percentages that was predicted in 2015. Wayne, if you want to go to the next slide? Now, I know this is not really easy to read, but on subsequent slides, I've blown up sections of this, so I just have this up here to reference a couple areas and kind of explain what some categories are. So the chart on the left is from the end of the 2022-23 school year, May 5. And we've got, we've got EMIS reports, we've got enrollment and withdrawal reports, so, and they don't always jive together because of some lags in time. So this one is probably the most accurate in terms of if a student enrolled, or if a family enrolled their, their child with CAMI, right now, it is entered into this spreadsheet right now. So this is the most accurate data that I have at my disposal as we, we talk about these things. So the, the spreadsheet on the left is the school year that we just completed as of May 5. The numbers are from May 5, we didn't complete the year on May 5. And the chart on the right is as of this morning for this upcoming school year. So we've got preschool, we've got kindergarten through fourth grade, that will go into the elementary totals. Fifth and sixth grade go into the BWI total. Seventh and eighth grade go to the middle school total. Ninth through 12th grade, as well as adult learners, go to the high school total. Adult learners are students typically who have an IEP, they've deferred their graduation to continue their education and receiving services as is outlined in their IEP. The total students underneath the Big Walnut High School total would be preschool through 12. Below that is a category called Big Walnut Students Electronic Building. So these are students who do not attend Big Walnut, but they elect to take the John Peterson Scholarship or the Autism Scholarship and enroll in a private school. This would also include preschool students who don't enroll in our preschool, but receive related services such as speech. So these are not students who are enrolled in an online academy like the old ECOT or K-12 or TRECA, some of those things that you may have heard. Those students are not accounted for in that electronic building. Okay? Wayne, if you want to go to the next one. So I've blown up the preschool and the elementary. So again, looking at essentially the school year we just finished, as well as where we stand today, and a couple things will, will jump out at you. Our preschool where we were at on May 5 is what we are already enrolled for this upcoming school year. And with the way preschool works, there are age requirements, and if you have a disability, you have to be, you have to be three before you can enroll. So that, that number is going to increase throughout the year. We will not stay at 148 this upcoming school year. The number that's most surprising to me is our kindergarten number. So our, our class that we just got done with was 305. Right now, we have 248 kindergartners enrolled. Now, this number is very unpredictable, because there may be 50 or 60 students out there whose families students out there whose families have not enrolled them yet. They could enroll them tomorrow, they can enroll them the first day of school, they could enroll them the first week of September. So I wouldn't anticipate that number will increase, but I, I can't say with confidence that it's going to increase to three hundred, because from what I'm told, we are normally over the two forty-eight mark at this point in the, in the, the summer. Uh, we've got grades one through four, and then the elementary totals, and again, the elementary totals do not include preschool. Now, the percentage on the right, so when we want to talk about growth of our enrollment, it's, it's not necessarily the best way to quantify that if you look at first grade this year and first grade next year, because class sizes, uh, are different. So you can get misleading numbers. Now, it is beneficial when we look at building capacity. It is beneficial when we're looking at staffing levels, but in terms of giving you an accurate picture of the growth of our district, uh, it's not the best, uh, indicator. Uh, what, what I've got, or what, what is a better indicator, I refer to as the cohort, and that's the percentage that is illustrated on the far right. So what that is taking is last year's kindergarten class and looking at the first grade class this coming school year. So we had three hundred and five kindergartners essentially finish the year, and we've got three hundred and twenty enrolled for first grades. That's an increase of about four point nine percent. But then you take a look at second grade, there were three hundred and fourteen of them in first grade, and we've gained two more for a point six percent increase. Uh, so as we do that and we go down through the process, Wayne, you can go to the next slide as I go to, uh, the order grade levels. As you look at that cohort number, you are not seeing the dramatic, uh, five, six, seven percent increase in enrollment. Uh, that, that increase from kindergarten to first grade, I believe, is actually the highest. We do have positives in every grade level except for, uh, the senior class. We're actually down, uh, two kids there. That class of three eighteen is now three sixteen as seniors. Now, when I look at total students, I, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. Uh, I, I don't do the cohort model with current kindergarteners because not everyone sends their kid to preschool, so that's not really an accurate indicator. So what I did was, I took this year's first grade through twelfth grade numbers and compared it with last year's kindergarten through eleventh grade numbers. And our total increase, when you look at what finished the year and what's scheduled to start, is an increase of one point three percent. Uh, again, even if we got fifty more kindergartners, that wouldn't impact that percentage because we're not looking at that in that cohort model. Uh, Wayne, if you could go to the next slide, please. So building capacity, this has been a concern, it's been a concern of mine. Um, and looking at where we finished this current school year and where we're scheduled to start the, the next school year, this does include kindergarten.
Current numbers.
Current numbers, correct, so these numbers could go up. Uh, BWE finished the year at three ninety-four and is scheduled to start the year at three ninety-three. GRE, uh, three forty-six, which is, has been, it's, I believe, the lowest enrollment uh, since that building's been open, uh, is actually going to go down to three twenty-seven next school year. PRE is going from four sixty-nine to four forty-two, and Souders stays fairly consistent, uh, three seventy-two to three sixty-seven. Uh, again, not to say, um, if, if you've walked into those buildings, there are not empty classrooms. So by no means am I trying to portray we don't have a, uh, issue on hand or, or will be on hand and, uh, but we, we do have seats. We've talked about we're out of classrooms, but we're not out of seats. So for example, we might have, uh, three third grade classrooms at, uh, BWE that have nineteen kids apiece. Well, we still can put six kids in each one of those classrooms, so we really have, we could take eighteen more third graders at BWE alone, and again, based on the percentages of projected increased enrollment, it's unlikely that's going to happen. But if in fact it did, we have seats and desks for those individuals before we would need to add a fourth class. I just completely made up that hypothetical. Uh, I, I cannot say that there are three third grade classes at BWE with eighteen, just giving a hypothetical. Uh, next slide, Wayne. Now, going back to the, the reports in two thousand fifteen and two thousand nineteen, and again, I believe my predecessors acted and planned based on the information they had at the time. By me sharing this, in no way am I saying or suggesting anyone did anything improper. Uh, I'm not criticizing, uh, either one of the reports. Again, I just want to illustrate where we were in two thousand fifteen, where we thought we would be in two thousand nineteen, and where we are-
Projections.
Projections, and where we are actually today. So the two columns on the far right, so the two thousand fifteen, most likely, those numbers are what were being projected for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So in two thousand fifteen, that was, uh, essentially an eight-year-out projection. The two thousand nineteen, uh, a four-year-out projection. But all of those numbers are looking at what we were projecting for this upcoming school year in August. Uh, so preschool was light, and I'm not going to go through every single one, but, uh, preschool was light in two thousand fifteen, uh, and probably a little more accurate to where we will be, maybe even still light in two thousand nineteen. Uh, the kindergarten numbers are, they, they were matching, but are low compared to where we are. But again, that number could go up. Um, if you look at the elementary totals, uh, that's where I think you start to see where the discrepancies and why there was the need for the Cropper Report to make the determination of we need to open one oh-five, this, my predecessors, not me, why, why there was the need to open one oh-five Baughman as the fifth elementary? Because in two thousand fifteen, the elementary totals were projected to be at sixteen ninety-three. Just in two thousand nineteen, sixteen twenty-eight, still almost a hundred from where we are today. Uh, the intermediate totals, uh, seven eighteen and six seventy-eight. Uh, the middle school, uh, is where the biggest discrepancy would have been back in two thousand fifteen. The projection for the school year coming up was seven seventy-five, and we will likely be around six fourteen as of today. Uh, again, the high school, uh, again, a, a big discrepancy from two thousand fifteen, projecting over fifteen hundred students, right now, we're right under thirteen hundred. Uh, but the two thousand nineteen projection, actually, on the, on the underside there, they were projecting twelve thirty, and, and that was based on the one, one hundred fifty new homes per year on the two night, two thousand nineteen study. The two thousand fifteen study had, had it broken down to, I believe, low, moderate, most likely, and high. The two thousand nineteen study broke it down by how many new homes would be built, and the one fifty was actually on the low side. So that has seemed to be the most accurate as we make those, uh, projections, uh, for where we are. The, the one thing before you move on, uh, so I, I don't, I don't have this information up here, but back in the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year, uh, our K, K-four population, uh, was thirteen hundred. So our elementary total in two thousand fourteen, fifteen was thirteen hundred, we're at fifteen twenty-nine. But that's a little over a two percent in student increase per year, uh, as it compounds. Uh, the fifth and sixth grade intermediate was at five twenty-eight, so we're at six fifty-one. That's about an annual increase of two point five percent. The middle school, four eighty-five, we're at six fourteen, that's about six, or I'm sorry, two point seven percent annual increase. And the high school was at nine seventy. We will be at twelve ninety-four, that's a little over, I believe, three point three percent annual increase. So our pre-K-12 population in fourteen fifteen was thirty-three seventy. Uh, so where we are right now at forty-two, thirty-six is approximately an annual increase of students at two point seven percent. So if you've got a class of, just to make math really easy, of a hundred kids, that's about three kids per year that are coming. Our classes aren't a hundred, our classes are about three hundred, so you're looking at nine kids per grade level on average. And again, at the elementary level, you're splitting those nine kids among four elementaries. Wayne, next slide, please.
Brian?
Yes.
Where do the Career Center students fall? Are they counted here?
I believe they, they are counted in this list, yes.
But then are they also counted at the Career Center?
Um, well, it's my understanding they attend the, uh, we have a sparrow in here?
Frog, I think.
We've got all kinds of fans tonight.
I thought it was a frog.
Uh, I think they go to the Career Center for half a day, so I think that's why they're still counted in our-
We, we still count them in our rolls regardless of where they attend.
Correct, correct, correct.
So the number here, we're, actually, he asked you, so I, I'm checking my understanding. The number here reflects any kids that are going to the Career Center.
Yes, yes. Uh, here's, just for historical perspective, Mr. Crowe asked, uh, me to share this information. Uh, our number of students district-wide that are homeschooled. So again, these are not reflected in any of those categories that were on that original chart. Uh, this is not a student who is attending one of those online schools. Uh, this is a traditional homeschooled student, so they have to report to the school, uh, that they are homeschooling their child annually. So, uh, the data I had went back to two thousand sixteen, seventeen. Uh, and as you can see, those numbers, uh, have increased up until this current school year uh, and are, are going slightly down. And again, the two twenty-five is based on everyone who was homeschooled this past year, who would not have graduated, uh, and the assumption is they are homeschooling again. So this does not take into effect the bottom number, twenty-three, twenty-four. Does not take into effect anyone who is newly going to homeschool or anyone who was homeschooled and will decide to enroll, re-enroll their child at Big Walnut or enroll them in an online academy. So that is basically where we are, again, as of about nine o'clock this morning. So this, uh, brings me back to the, the plan I had discussed earlier this school year of what, what we can do to alleviate our crowding issues at the elementary. Uh, and again, uh, by no means am I, am I portraying we are not growing, we are growing. Uh, but we are not growing to the point where we need to put eight trailers up outside of each building. Uh, I still think this is going to alleviate, uh, space at each one of the elementaries, is going to give us some breathing room. Um, I, I don't believe that two point seven percent increase is going to stay at two point seven, but I also don't anticipate it jumping to nine percent, uh, even with Intel being to our east. Uh, so with the preschool staying at Harrison Street or a centralized location, uh, the elementary's becoming K-three, that will free up three to four additional classrooms at each one of the elementaries for future growth, before we decide are we going to build a fifth elementary, are we going to renovate one oh-five Baughman at, at some point. That space will run out, uh, but I don't anticipate that being in a year or two. The intermediate becomes a four-five, the middle school becomes a six-eight, and the high school remains a nine-twelve. Uh, that building is not at full capacity right now. It does have room to grow, and, and I think we will be good there for, for several years.
What I like about your plan is that it does allow a couple of things. First off, go back to projections in two thousand nineteen, that was all prior to significant change, number one. So like, to your point of, you know, this, these numbers weren't intended to be, throw anybody off. Number two, what I like about your plan is the fact that it alleviates the pressure right now, and it puts the growth where there's the most room to grow in buildings where there's not that same tightness. The middle school moving over to five-five-five South Old Three C, become the middle school, that building was designed for four grades. We're increasing it by one grade, that's where the change really happens. To that end, as you're thinking about that staffing plan one year from now, I believe that's the building that's going to need the most support, because they're going to grow from essentially six fourteen, using today's numbers, to adding another three hundred and twenty-nine, class of three hundred and twenty-nine, because they will be in sixth grade at that time. So that'll be another, you know, that'll increase the size of that school by three hundred and twenty-nine kids.
Correct.
Is there anything about the intermediate school that the facility would not be accommodating fourth grade age kids?
Other than a lack of a playground, um, that, that's the biggest need. Uh, in terms of restroom facilities, the gym, the cafeteria, I, I believe it will be, uh, the, the furniture will be suitable for fourth grade students.
Steps, there'll be steps there where none of the elementaries currently have steps.
That is correct. Again, the, the added, there, there are a couple of benefits to this. This eliminates the need to redistrict.
Right.
So that is always, people just love when schools redistrict. That was sarcasm. Uh, and again, this, this has not been board-approved yet. Uh, to be honest with you, I want to see where our numbers are as, as we get closer to the school year. We are, we are planning for this, but if for some reason our numbers are going the other direction or are holding steady, and we can push this out, then, then we would push this out. But, um, I, I, I want to get some more, some more data before I present this to you to, uh, approve. Now, now for families, like I, I, I'm talking August, so that you have a year. Uh, I'm not pushing this out to December, and we're gonna, uh, surprise you right before holiday break and, and all those things, because there are things that we want to make sure we do right for those third grade kids.
Right.
Because traditionally at the elementary, a big rite of passage is to clap out for fourth graders. We want to make sure we still do that for the third grade, because, uh, they will essentially be leaving their elementary school. So there's some things that we've already discussed as principals, uh, as an administrative team, that we want to have laid out, uh, for, for the student experience, uh, before making this move.
That, that was my next question, is staff, have, have the staff had any input on this?
Not, not yet.
Okay.
They're, they're aware, they're aware of the plan, uh, but we've not started, uh, and we're going to do that. We're going, we want their input, uh, but we've not started those, those groups yet.
Okay.
So if that were the case, then it would have to be after August, if you're going around to meet with staff that have their input.
Well, I, I think their, their input is more what's the trans, what's the transition going to look like? Um, they, I, I believe they understand the reason for this, and it makes sense. Um, I don't think they want to, like, stop it. That's, that's my take. Any, uh, any questions on, on any of this?
Because PRE was going to open.
Okay.
That's why that study was done. The numbers that aren't on here, Brian, are the building capacities. Public needs to know that we have the capacity for somewhere around two thousand additional students.
Yeah, my, I, I believe, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the capacity at BWE and Souders is four?
Four thirty-five, I believe, at BWE.
I'm going to pull it up, I don't want to-
Four twenty-seven at Souders. Five hundred.
We, we are, we are under capacity in all, all four elementaries to start the school year.
The, my thing, Mr. Crowe's point is to have this be a truly reflective document, making sure to also not only show the percentage of growth, which was under what was talked about in two thousand nineteen, but also where there is space to grow. So where you were talking about things being tight, classrooms, whatever, um, the, everywhere has space to grow like that? The conversation of who has the most space to grow minus where things are tight, because you are beholden to actual class size in elementary schools, is your middle and high schools.
So, yeah, and at the elementary level, GRE has the most room to grow, uh, which is fortunate because those, that's where the houses are being billed, built in that, uh, elementary district. Uh, so according to the Cropper Report, Big Walnut Elementary's capacity, should have brought my glasses. Uh, four oh-five, uh, GRE five hundred, Highland Souders four oh-seven, Harrison Street two- Harrison Street, two-sixty-five, and P R E didn't exist yet. So Wayne, if you can go back to that elementary slide, please, keep going, keep going. Yeah, so Big Walnut Elementary, four-oh-five. So I mean, we're up there, but we're.
And again, the way to make space there and allow it to grow is to take the fourth grade out, which is going to be.
Correct.
An interesting piece of news came to me this week, and that is the Miller Farm development at the intersection of Sunbury Road, Vans Valley, and Trenton. July fifteen, they're having a zoning meeting that might be interesting to attend.
I was aware of that development, I wasn't aware of the meeting.
Now you are.
Thank you. Any other questions on anything in here?
What are you setting the capacity of the high school? It was built for eighteen-hundred-and-fifty-one, but the third floors weren't finished. So what's our, what is our actual capacity available there?
My understanding is when the building is fully open, is the capacity's eighteen-hundred. So that's including the third floor, so the nine pods would be.
It was sold as an eighteen-hundred-and-fifty-one capacity building.
And that could be accurate.
Right. My point is, we have some furnished rooms and some rooms that aren't furnished.
Correct, that is correct.
So what is our capacity currently? Because that's an unknown, or do you even know it?
Well, we've had to buy furniture, because as you look at that. For the additional rooms, so we will be expanding into that middle pod on the third floor. So those of you who are not familiar with the new high school, essentially, there's three academic floors with three pods, and in each pod, there's, I don't know how many classrooms around the exterior. So this school year, we were occupying all three on the first, all three on the second, and the far left on the top floor. The middle pod was being used a little bit for study hall, one or two periods a day, but other than that, there were no classes going in there. With the addition of, we're adding a teacher for FFA, we're adding an art class, we're gonna, the plan is to add American Sign Language. I believe we added a social study. So with the addition of just those four right there, we need to start filling some of the classroom space in the middle pod. So we're getting the furniture to make sure we can do that. And then the rest of the classrooms in that pod are empty. They don't have furniture, they're not used. The far-right pod on the third floor is a ghost town.
So, which, that's all water over, and we're sitting at a very good place. My concern is that we fill up the space with electives instead of the real purpose of having the capacity. That'll be my concern in the future as well.
You're wanting to add more electives, or we've added?
Oh, I'd love to add more electives, but the building capacity of eighteen-fifty-one, your capacity is set by the usage of the building, not what it was constructed at. So you could take that eighteen-fifty-one and fill up the rooms, lower the density in each room, and basically be at capacity again at fifteen-hundred. I don't want that to happen. I'm sure you don't either.
I don't want to buy the furniture.
True.
Thank you, Ryan. That was very helpful information to know exactly who we have and where they're going to be. And I think the plan looks very, very good, and I can see it being a productive, productive idea.
You plan on putting this on the webpage?
I can put it on the, I can have Wayne put it on the website, yes.
Well, wait, if he does that, though, do you want those building capacity columns added?
I can add a slide.
Yes.
And then, and then to Mr. Crowe's point, sorry, I said Doug earlier. To Mr. Crowe's point, the conversation of what that capacity is at the current high school. So what it was at five-five-five, I actually.
Six-hundred-and-sixty.
The current middle school is six, it has to be larger.
No, it was six, the capacity, not the current, the current is seven-hundred.
No, no, at five-five-five South Old Three C.
Oh, five-five-five. The original was a thousand, they added.
Fourteen-hundred.
To it, no. It's too.
Again, my only point is, you add those numbers in there as well.
Fourteen-hundred.
I actually don't, when it was high school, it was approach, I don't know. That's why I'm asking Mr.
Yep, I can look into that. Just two other updates for my superintendent's report, and these will be much briefer than what I said would be brief before. The auctions, the district, we held an auction this past Saturday. There were items that were no longer being used, stored over at our bus garage, items that were there when I was the principal at Big Walnut Intermediate five years ago that were not useful then, that were still there and still not useful now. So we, before we did the auction, we went through to pull anything that could be used. Like, not that it was just old, but if it was still in good condition, it was worth keeping. So chairs, desks, some cafeteria tables. We took all of those items and took them to one-oh-five Baughman. That way, if an elementary says, hey, I need a new set of chairs, we've got several hundred over there that are still in good shape. Things that were not useful, things that were, in my terms, junk, that were just being kept for no other reason than being kept, were part of the auction. So it was an entertaining event. I was here on Saturday, my first auction. It was the, what you would expect an auction to be. We did not make a ton of money. We did not make enough that we've solved all of our financial woes. After associated costs, we brought in just under sixteen thousand dollars. But what we did do is we cleared out space that we're going to move maintenance over there and get them out of the old metal shed behind one-oh-five Baughman, give them a little better situation. And we did not pay to rent dumpsters and to pay our staff to throw the stuff away. People paid us to take it out of there. So looking forward to having a useful space and not waiting ten years to have our next auction.
You'll be happy to know, I looked through all the stuff, there was nothing from when I went to school here.
By the looks, I'm not going to say anything. Quite wrong ahead. My final update is an update on Gilbane. Shortly after our meeting last month, where the board took a vote to put them on their thirty days notice, the message was received loud and clear, in my opinion. I had a meeting, I believe, the following Friday with some members from Gilbane, including a senior vice president. In my opinion, and again, I've been dealing with Gilbane for a much shorter period of time than you all have, but in my opinion, that meeting went really well. They were very receptive. They made me aware of some things that I was not aware of. There were some issues that they were unaware of, but they were going to make those things right and make some repairs. So they've already made numerous repairs, not all of them, but the concrete in front of the high school has been repaired. I let someone into P R E to fix the epoxy flooring in two, four of the restrooms. So they are getting on top of things. We did discuss the baseball and softball fields. We have decided to go our separate ways on that. I was not interested in having them try to fix it. To be honest with you, I don't think that they were heartbroken over that. However, they are going to compensate us for a percentage of those repairs. Not one hundred percent, but more than fifty percent of that. I, in my discussions with them, I didn't believe that it should be a fifty-fifty split. And we came to what I believe is an agreement. So on the agenda this evening, you will see my recommendation for a contract for a consultant who will oversee the work of the baseball and softball fields, a contract for a company to redo the baseball field. So that is, we are doing everything other than the infield. We are killing the grass, we are relavelling it, laser levelling it, reseeding it, and doing it in what my opinion is the right way. With some individuals, I have confidence in that they will make sure it gets done the right way. And then a third contract is the.
Are they able to start tomorrow? If approved tonight?
If it's up to me, yes. I will be making a phone call here when this meeting's over in twenty minutes.
It's supposed to rain tonight. Is it?
And then the third, the third contract's for repair of the softball field. Multiple people that we had brought in felt that that was, that did not have to be completely redone. There were some sections that needed redone, but it wasn't a total scrap it and start over. So the company that is doing the baseball field is also doing the softball field, but it's a separate contract.
I want to be sure I understand, all of this work was not done correctly originally? Is that the case?
We didn't get the product that I felt that we should get. However, there were checkpoints along the way that, as a district, we would have had an opportunity to say something that maybe wasn't brought to their attention, or things were okayed. So that's why I don't, they didn't feel they were a hundred percent on the hook. I honestly couldn't say they were one hundred percent on the hook, but I didn't think it was a fifty-fifty mistake.
My next question is, and I was looking for it on the agenda, and having attended the dance recital a week ago, and how cozy it was in the auditorium. What the issue is, since we know the H V A C is not working correctly, is there any report on that that we could benefit from hearing tonight?
Yeah, we are still trying to set a date to get all of the parties, because there are so many people involved in that final meeting. And with it being the summer, getting everyone there. Right now, it's tentatively next Friday, but according to an email I got today, it looks like one of the parties is unavailable that day. So there's the chance that that meeting will take place on a Saturday or a Sunday, or it could potentially be the following week. But we have not reconvened, because there are so many people involved on that. All of the testing that needed to be done has been done. Those reports have been received. They've taken time to analyze and come up with their opinions on what the issue is and what the remedy is, but we've not gotten together to figure out what that is at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah. That is all I have for my report, unless there's any other questions.
Can you forward to the board when you find out when the thirty days is up, the date?
Yes.
Hopefully, it's before the meeting on the twenty-ninth.
Yep.
Moving on, item number seven, treasures report. Taren, you got anything?
A couple of things. You have my monthly financials in your packet. To be real honest, I don't know that I had prepared much to speak to those, because we're in the middle of closing out the fiscal year, right? And that's where most of our attention is at the current time. So I think that the May month-end financials kind of stand on their own accord. I always do a records request document. Over the past month, we've only had two requests for records, knock on wood, because sometimes I get record requests on Friday mornings. So I will say, however, and both of those have been filled, so we have no outstanding records requests at this time. One of those, because of the nature of the request, we will probably see some legal fees involved. I do not believe those legal fees will be extensive at all. It was just, simply required me to consult with our attorney on the best possible way to respond. So we will see a charge, but I think it will be minimal. The last item that's in your packet is a draft of a capital improvement plan. Mr. Crowe had asked me to put some things together. It's certainly not intended to be an action item this evening. It's meant more to spur discussion. One of the things that, and it says this, and I think in the first sentence, one of the reasons why we did it was that in the belief that this board feels that our facilities, the maintenance of those facilities, and upkeep of those facilities is important and a priority. The whole premise behind it is taking a look at our true days cash projections from the five-year forecast that you adopted in May, understanding that in order to make any difference in what our facilities are, we would have to spend into our reserves. I did some calculations, spending our reserves down to a hundred and fifty days true cash. Quite honestly, that is just an arbitrary figure. But if we look at spending next year's projection, which is a hundred and sixty-four days down to a hundred and fifty, that's fourteen days of cash that we would, we could put forth toward this effort. And we spend almost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a day in this district. So that comes up to a budget of one-point-eight million dollars. And that is a one-time budget, it's not an ongoing expense. And we could put that with our permanent improvement budget and try to tackle some of the issues that we've all been talking about. I had a conversation with Mr. Fuji today about, you know, logistics and process and procedure. I guess one of the things that, a couple of things. Number one, as I said in my introductory remarks, this was for discussion purposes. Because it's for discussion purposes, before we would commit those kinds of funds toward any effort, I would expect to have some kind of board action on it and an open, honest, candid board discussion and open, honest, candid conversation with the facilities committee. But I did want to get that information in front of you so that you could see what we're thinking, what is possible, and the possible ramifications and conversation that could take place. So quite honestly, I think that's more substantive than talking about the May end financials at this point in time.
Well, until we have some estimates, I don't know that we need to discuss that, or if a board member wants to, they can bring it up. You got something on it, Steve?
Well, no, I actually want to say, commend you for coming up with this thought and having the conversation with Mr. Jenkins, and I commend Mr. Jenkins for coming up with this information. I like the principles by which it's kind of designed, a hundred and fifty days on hand, how that impacts the five-year forecast, tagging into the numbers that Mr. McLean brought. I thought it was really smart. The only wonder that I have would be if we did take action on it. I would like to see some sort of prioritized list about where that funding would go in terms of highest needs. Because I think we could probably look around very easily and identify needs, each of us, but I don't know that those are what the district and the team would identify as the highest needs as well. So I'd want to see if we were to take action on it. And I actually believe it would require action, because this would be outside of appropriations, right? We'd be moving money. So in order to consider that, I'd want to see if we were to do that or if that action were to be on the next agenda or an agenda at some point. I just want to see what that prioritized list would be. So in order to consider that, I, I'd want to see if, if we were to do that, or if that action were to be on the next agenda or an agenda at some point, I just want to see what that prioritized list would be of what would happen with that dollar amount.
Have we ever found the mysterious twenty thirteen document? That listed the fifteen million dollars worth of repairs needed in the district?
No. The, the only document I have is, is the ongoing one, but no, not anything from that specific time period.
I've looked in my records and can't find it, but it's, it was presented uh, numerous times in verbal. Uh, I think they brought one once, but I haven't been able to find it. I thought maybe you guys might be able to find it in the records. Some of, some of what was on that list has already been addressed, like the boilers at the high school for five-five-five. Uh, the roof on Bee Wee. Over the last five or six years, some of that list has been addressed from twenty thirteen. And that, instead of going around and looking things up, because we can all find plenty of things. If we had that as a base list, check off what was accomplished, look at the other items that are left. Use that as a base and then add to it.
So I, I do have a list from the previous administration. I don't know if it's the two thousand thirteen list, but I do have a capital improvement list, uh, that they had been working on.
Can you forward that to me?
Yep.
And then, uh, to Steve's point, yes, it would take action. Our cash reserve is in the appropriations, isn't it? When we
It was in the, it was in the forecast.
It's, it's in the appropriations we approve.
We, when we, um, and you'll be doing that in, at the next meeting, right? At our special meeting, we'll be adjusting any appropriations for the current fiscal year before year end.
It's not a special meeting. We have one scheduled on the twenty ninth.
Okay. Anyway, w- we will adjust a- and amend any, any changes that are needed for the FY twenty-three appropriations before fiscal year end. And then you'll be adopting a temporary appropriations measure for FY twenty-four. Uh, so yes, our appropriations, um, mirror our, um, five-year forecast, which mirrors our spending plan. So in order to, to
Adjust.
Yeah, I, I mean, we would have to have board action to, to include that in our appropriations measure. But I, I mean, I've said this all along, if that's, if this is something that we want to do, then we need to have a spending plan on what and then people can argue about that, but at least they understand where we're going and what we're trying to accomplish, quite honestly. But, yeah.
Are you saying, so would the twenty ninth be too early to have?
If we can find, I, I, well,
It wouldn't be or it shouldn't be too early if the dollar, the, the board needs to set and say this much of the cash reserve that is available, take action on that. And then as the projects are debbie'd up.
Considered.
Then we can approve each individual one. But to get started on it on the twenty ninth, we'll take action on taking fourteen days of the cash reserve.
Yes.
And, uh, setting a hundred and fifty days is the limit to remain. And we'll work off that fourteen days. That work Darren.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
That answer your concerns?
My only other comment, I do pay attention to your monthly, um, forecast, or not forecast, the financial report.
Right.
Uh, and one of the numbers, just to tie back to Mr. McLean's conversation of, you know, we're not seeing five percent a year, which I, I certainly agree with and understand. The one number that I've certainly paid attention to on here over time has been the enrollment from, because you always have ten-year look back.
Yes.
So for added context, uh, the number of students that ended the year in May twenty thirteen was three thousand one hundred and thirty-eight, which can be found on, on the bottom of your report. And the number of students that ended the year this past year, forty-two eighty-one, according to this report, there's about fourteen kids difference between uh, this report and what Mr. McLean shared, uh, that equates with thirty-six point four-two percent change, increase. So I always pay attention to that. I always think there's something to, to look at in your reports. I don't be so humble. I like looking at it. Plus it has very pretty pie graphs and charts.
Pretty colors too.
Yeah, so I just draw that out for, uh, consideration as we definitely have not seen what we, what was projected in fifteen and nineteen for sure. But to also articulate that we have grown significantly in that. Not as significantly as we was.
Is that all you got Darren?
That's it.
Item number eight, selected board policy. I don't think we have anything under that tonight, other than we're still working on the board policies. Uh, item nine, board members' items of interest is the public participation prior or after?
After.
After, okay. Uh, we'll start with Alice. Got anything?
Oh, I always have something. I just, uh, hope our teachers are, are having a wonderful start to their summer vacations. And, uh, stay safe and just get regenerated to come back. And just want to thank all the staff for all their hard work and especially in the transition of some of the things that we're putting out there for them to be responsible for. And, um, just thank everybody for their hard work and wish everybody a safe summer.
Todd, you got anything?
I was almost going to say something very similar, you know, uh, happy summer, everyone. It is, it is here. Uh, it's time for fun, barbecues, for those of us who are twenty-one and older and beverages. Uh, but I also just want to share, be safe out there, be respectful and, uh, and keep an eye out for one another and be safe. So have, enjoy the summer, but be safe about it. That's it.
Steve? Nothing? I'll save everybody time and I'll say nothing as well. Now is it public participation?
Yep, uh, the, the one, uh, slip that was turned in is from Leanne Carr.
I don't think we need to worry about the timer even. It's going to be short because it changed after the beginning of the meeting. So good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for deciding to move public participation back to its original place on the agenda. Public participation is a great way to hear your constituents' concerns face to face. By moving public participation to the end of the school board meeting, you would have been making how your constituents feel about agenda items and afterthought. All of the actions of the meeting would have already taken place. All votes would have been made. I was most concerned about the students. Would they have been able to speak during pu- public participation if the meeting went long on a school night? By making it at the end of the meeting, it seemed like their opinions didn't matter to the board, only the opinions that you guys came with. Certainly, we would have been free to email you our feelings, but when we receive an agenda just over twenty-four hours before the meeting with agenda points and descriptions that tend to be very vague, that certainly doesn't leave much time to compose an email, send it and guarantee it be read by all the board members. Especially when some board members notoriously don't respond to their emails, how would we even know that your thoughts or our thoughts would have been read? All other school districts, their board meetings in Delaware County have public participation in the early points of their agenda. Having it at the end of the meeting gave the impression you were trying to dissuade people from speaking during public participation. I believe you made the right decision for those that you are supposed to represent in the district and want to thank you again.
Thank you.
Item number ten, business items. Ten point one is recommended the board approve, the corrected and attached twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school fees.
So moved.
Second.
When you're ready Darren.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Ten point two, it is recommended the board approve the re- approve to renew the district's fleet, property and liability coverage through the Ohio School Plan at a cost of two hundred and twenty-two thousand and ninety-nine dollars. This represents an increase of forty thousand over last year's rate. The rate increase is due to their reappraisal of the district property values. Not increased exposure. Additionally, it is recommended to purchase cyber insurance through Tokyo Marine HCC at a cost of fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is a new firm, but the coverage is the same as our current policy. This rate represents a five thousand dollar savings over renewing with our current provider.
So moved.
Second.
Forty thousand dollar jump?
Actually.
Or is this, is this the organization on the bus?
Yeah, it is. Uh, uh, I, I'll let me say two things to that. Number one, if that's half of the increase, so if we were going to, if we were to pay a full freight for this year, we would have been looking at an eighty thousand dollar increase in premium. That, that's the first thing I'll tell you. The second thing I will tell you is that, um, nah, probably February, we'll begin looking and taking this to bid next year, see if we can find a different provider.
Oh, so this is half year?
No, it's for the year, but it, it renews every July first. So if we take it to bid after the first of the year, February, March, we can get bids out, get them back, review them and be ready to go with whomever we think is, uh, the most, um, competitive.
Before July?
Yes, yes.
And anybody else have any questions? On the cyber?
Yes.
What does that cover?
Uh, it, the, the, the short answer is it covers us being hacked, uh, and it also covers us for ransomware. Uh, if we were not to purchase this, we could get a cyber policy through Ohio School Plan, but there is a pooled aggregate statewide or, and I say statewide through all of their membership. So if two or three districts had hits and then we ended up having a hit, we could be
The aggregate may be reached and we'll be stuck out.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, that's one of the reasons why we want to do our own thing.
And does this cover for loss? Six years ago or seven years ago, there was a township that got hacked. Uh, and they withdrew.
Yeah, there's been school districts that, that have gotten hacked too, honestly. Uh, that's one of the reasons why the rates are so outrageous. But, um, in order to even get coverage, there's certain things that we have to have in place, certain protocols. Uh, one of them, which everyone loves, but it's a big thing with, uh, Wayne and his crew is two-factor authentication when we do things. And that is a requirement for, uh, cyber coverage, for example. So, uh, I mean, we, we try to do things, the IT department tries to, to, to hold our feet to the fire to mitigate risk and so that we can get renewals and renewals at a reasonable rate.
And we don't move, well, I'll ask this question later.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
I prefer the two-factor authentication over the how many stoplights are in this district.
Our sad walls.
Item ten point three, it is recommended the board approve the following account transfers. Uh, five hundred and thirty dollars from the general stale checks fund to capital projects fund.
Second.
Greater than five years old?
Yep, that's why we're trying to get it closed. Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ten point four, it is recommended the board approve the resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation for the benefit of the community library.
So moved.
Second. I'll yield that.
John C., you wanting more money?
For you is a request to be placed on the ballot. That's one of the, um, relationships we have with you is that you actually put the library on the ballot on our behalf. And what's before you is a one-mill replacement levy. Before I get to that, I'd like to talk about uh, that levy within the context of the services we provide to the community. Currently, we have about twenty-one thousand registered members at our library. And actually I was looking over the past, from twenty-one to twenty-two, uh, we had a forty-four percent increase in new patrons, uh, signing up for new accounts. Uh, we currently are, at the end of twenty twenty-two, we had circulated close to about two hundred and seventy-five thousand items from our library. And, um, over the past five years, that's averaged about a five percent increase each year on those items. E-books have increased about twenty-eight percent over that same time. So ebooks continue to really take off. And then, um, in terms of programming, we, we took a hit, as everyone did with COVID, because nobody wanted to meet in person, but we have rebounded from that. So we now have about twenty-one thousand people attending our programs each year. And that's back to where it was before COVID. In addition to those traditional library services that we provide, um, we, we do a whole bunch of other things. Some of you remember during COVID, we distributed COVID tests and we continue to do that. To date, we've, uh, distributed close to eighteen thousand COVID tests to the community. Um, and that was a partnership with the state of Ohio. So there was no direct cost to any folks for those. They just come to the library and, and get them. We have, uh, expanded our hotspot, our mobile hotspot, uh, devices that we circulate. We're now to forty-five of those that community members can use when they're on vacation or traveling for business, or if their internet goes out. We also are now circulating actual laptops. So if somebody needs a laptop to do a project, they can come to the library and check out a laptop with the hotspot. And it has Microsoft Suite on it and everything. Um, we have other things like traffic cones for kids that are learning how to drive and they need to prod- practice maneuverability. We have handheld GPS devices for folks that want to go hiking or ju- do like geocaching or whatever. We have projectors that folks can borrow. We continue to offer programs, uh, to the kids like storytimes, but we've expanded those to offer more offerings, after-school offerings, homeschool programming, STEM programming. Uh, we've expanded our teen programming quite a bit. That's been an area that has been lacking over the years, but we've really put a concerted effort into that area over the past several years. And, um, we're doing things like writing clubs, book clubs, coding clubs. And we've seen an eighty percent jump in teen attendance at programs since, uh, prior to COVID. So taking COVID out of the equation, looking at where we were prior to COVID, we're eighty percent a- ahead of there. We've also focused on multi-generational programming and pulling people of all ages together. So, uh, we do movie nights. Um, one of the, uh, cool program that I just loved was a couple of years ago, when we had snow during the winter, we had families go out to the nursing home and build snowmen for folks that were in, uh, the nursing home. And that was great to see that. We've also expanded our notaries, so folks can come to the library to get things notarized. Um, we offer passport services. So if you need a passport, or if you need to renew one, you can do that at the library. And then in terms of, uh, electronic resources, we've expanded our databases to include popular things like consumer reports online. So if you're shopping for a new washing machine, you can go on and search it and see what's the best one out there. And we've done technology things like improving our app so people can find stuff and manage their accounts better. With our building, our, the, our main part of our building is about thirty years old. So, you know, that takes maintenance and you know, to keep that looking nice and
You don't say.
Fresh for the community, yeah. Yeah, that's a huge expense. And then we were fortunate enough to install a generator, um, over the past year. And actually, I think next week, uh, we actually get the gas hooked up to that, but the goal in that was to provide a place in the community that if the power goes out in the winter or in the summer, people can come to stay warm or, or cool down or whatever. So I go through that. There's more we do. That's just like what I kind of threw out there. Um, this would not be possible without local support. Prior to two thousand nine, we were almost a hundred percent funded by the state of Ohio. And because of, uh, circumstances with the economy and whatnot, we had to go for local funding back then. But the local funding has enabled us to do so much more than we could ever dream of if we were just on state funding. So this state funding is critical to us. Um, so what you have before you is a one-mil replacement. It is a replacement levy, so it does, um, reset the valuation to the current values of homes. So the cost of this replacement would be thirty-five dollars per every hundred thousand dollar of the, um, auditor's assessed value. So that's what's before you. Um, the reason we decided to go with the replacement was, as you know, the costs of things are going up. They continue to go up, and we're at a point now that our expenses, uh, are increasing on average about six percent a year while our revenue is not increasing at that rate. And we want to continue to provide these great services and programs to the community, and that's why we decided to go with the replacement.
Did you say you had twenty-one thousand?
Cardholders. Is that?
Population's twenty-five. You're doing really, really good.
Yeah, so one of the unique things about the state of Ohio is you can get a library card at any public library in Ohio. And so we do pick up quite a few folks that are maybe on the north side of Westerville, or maybe in Centerburg or Marango. We'll, we'll get quite a few folks in those surrounding communities that come to our library. And, and our patrons, I know patrons in our library that have cards at Westerville and Columbus and, and whatnot. So that, that's not uncommon.
Any question?
Good luck.
Thank you, Chauncey. When you're ready, Darren.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes. Ten point five, it is recommended the board approve Field Source LLC to oversee the renovation project to Big One High School baseball and softball fields.
I move.
Second.
This is the consultancy.
Correct.
Any discussion needed? When you're ready, Darren.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Ten point six.
I, I do have a question. With all the renovation of this field, when will it be, uh, ready for use?
Should be next spring, shouldn't it?
Should be-
Next spring.
Next spring. That's the plan. Now, one of the things that held up this past year was the irrigation system was not functioning in the baseball field. It was functioning in the softball field. So I believe baseball didn't get seeded until maybe late August, first week of September. That has since been rectified and we will be able to get water on that five minutes after they plant the seed.
Five minutes?
If I have to pull the switch.
I'll be out there with a stopwatch. Ten point six, it is recommended the board approve Penland Seeding, Inc. to perform renovations to the Big One High School baseball field.
Second.
Without any questions?
It's, so that, this is the company that is going to do the work, the consultant's going to oversee it. Penland's the company that will do.
And we're going to get reimbursed. How much? What percentage on this one?
Um.
Is this a seventy or?
Baseball is, it was seventy percent of the lowest bid. I can't recall if it was this bid or not at the time.
It's something.
Approximately seventy percent.
Meeting narrow. Get it on paper. Any questions, Darren?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Ten point seven, it is recommended the board approve Penland Seeding, Inc. to perform renovations to the Big One High School softball field. This is an overseeding.
This is their, I believe, removing part of center field, part of right field, where there's a lot of rocks.
Putting amended soil in.
Are they removing the rocks?
Yes.
When you're ready.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ten point nine, it is recommended the board accept the following donations. Uh, miscellaneous supplies of a value of a hundred and forty dollars and twenty-six cents donated by Barbie Newman. Four hundred donated to Big One High School by Ograd LLC to the principal's fund at the high school. Seven hundred and fifty dollars donated to Big One Local School District donated by Steven Fuji. Do I have a, so moved?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Wake up.
I, I'm at the next one.
When you're ready.
Mr. Fuji?
I've seen.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes. Item eleven, human resources. All HR items are pending receipt of successful background checks, verification of experience, and completion of all necessary documentation. Eleven point one, it is recommended the board approve the staffing plan for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I move.
Second.
Is this an amended plan?
This is, this is updated from the one that you originally approved, so the changes were, uh, in title uh, to, from communications coordinator to communications specialist that you approved. I believe it was assistant food service director. We changed the title to assistant food service supervisor and, uh, director of facilities slash business manager, what ended up being director of facilities. The ads are going to be at the intermediate school, so we are, uh, we have a student who is hearing impaired, who will need an ASL interpreter. So I did not have that knowledge when I submitted my original plan, so that's one of the ads. And as you did see, one of the buildings that was going to see significant, significant growth this coming school year was the intermediate building. Uh, we were on the bubble. Uh, it looks like we're going to be over the bubble and needing to add, uh, likely a math teacher and an intervention specialist at the intermediate building. Uh, other than that, everything, uh, remains the same. So three adds from the original.
To, to, the total on this list of sixteen. That's the sixteen in place of the forty-four.
Correct. And then one of the things that I don't think was factored in, well, I know was not factored in in the original plan because the school year wasn't over, is we had three elementary teachers retire, and we are not replacing those three at this time, uh, due to current class sizes and our, our current uh, teaching and, and class size ratios are going to be okay. Uh, so really those three adds will offset the three that we're not going to replace.
Better for, if our enrollment goes up on that level.
Correct, correct.
And the communication specialist and, uh, food service, those are the job titles that we'll be approving. Potent that are up for approval later in the agenda.
Yeah, so the, the job descriptions and those positions for the communications and the assistant food service will be coming up tonight, correct?
Any other questions?
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Eleven point two, it is recommended the board approve the following new positions and job descriptions. Assistant food service supervisor and communications specialist.
So moved.
Second.
Which you just discussed.
Correct.
Do you have one question on the assistant food supervisor, services supervisor? Generally speaking, in the past, historically speaking, those positions have been paid for out of F tier's budget, food service budget. This position is one of those?
Yes.
So even though you have it as an ad earlier, it's still self-funded?
Correct. And the, and the communications position was a position, position up until this current school year, so we're bringing that position back.
Well.
Well, it wa- it was, it went through the ESC, we were hiring it through the district, but it's not a completely new position to the district.
Bear with me for one clarification. Not on this, but on the previous we've already voted on. You had titled on there administrative assistant for business manager.
That's a different position.
For, yeah, for, that was the administrative assistant for the business manager, which should be the director of facilities slash other duties. So we've not, we've not filled that position yet. We had talked about adding an administrative assistant. Part of their duties would have been to assist at the time we were discussing business manager slash facilities director. So that position is still-
Will you bring that back to the board before you fill the position? Or prior to, uh, have you advertised for that position?
We have not, not yet.
And could you bring it back to the board before you do?
Sure.
Okay. And I apologize for backing up. So we're on eleven two. Any other questions on eleven point two?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Eleven point three, it is recommended the board approve a two-year, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-day administrative level two contract for Alan Feman, assistant food services supervisor, sixty-five thousand annual salary, effective beginning in the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So his first day, or his start day, is?
I believe August first.
Okay.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Eleven point four, it is recommended the board approve the following resignations effective at the end of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh, I'm not going to tear up these names. I'll just say the positions. Big One Middle School Science Teacher, Big One High School Spanish Teacher, pending board approval at her new employment. Big One High School Secretary to Attendance, Big One High School Science Teacher, Big One Intermediate Intervention Specialist, Big One High School Second Shift Custodian.
So moved. Second.
Vicki Tyler. Was that the veteran that we hired?
Yes. I hope she hates her new job. I told her that.
You hope she hates her new job?
Hope she hates it and wants to come back.
So?
Uh, she, she has an opportunity that's much closer to our house, so-
Oh, okay.
She's leaving on good terms, and I just spoke to her the other day and wished her the best of luck, but hope she hates her new job.
You didn't slice her tires or-
Nah, didn't.
Will each of these individuals be given a exit survey?
Yes, we have, we have offered, uh, every exiting staff member, uh, an exit survey, so I do have some data to share with you later uh, on that, but some people take us up on it, some don't, but everyone's been offered that opportunity.
Any other questions?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes. Eleven point five, it is recommended the board approve the following classified contracts. Uh, Jennifer Tishko, preschool teaching assistant, step one year, one-year contract, effective twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Christina Rhines, preschool teaching assistant, step one, one-year contract, effective twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Deanna Pogue, GRE Office Assistant, four hours a day, step zero, hundred and ninety-day contract, effective twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And Bruce Jennings, mechanic, step nine, ninety-day contract, effective June fifteen, twenty-twenty-three. So he's starting tomorrow? Or did he start today?
Today.
So moved. Second.
Any questions?
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Eleven point six, it is recommended the board approve the following certified contracts for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Megan Walsh, uh, Big One Intermediate School Art Teacher, BA, step one. Tyler Schuster, Intervention Specialist, Big One Intermediate School, BA, step zero. Glenn Ho- Hodges, Intervention Specialist, Big One Intermediate, Master Thirty, step seven. Jay Michelle Gallenauer, Intervention Specialist, Big One Intermediate, Masters Forty-five, step seven. Jacob Houston, Intervention Specialist, Big One Middle School, BA, step five, and Kayla Moats, Big One Elementary School Counselor, Master Step Four. Shelby Brady, Big One High School School Counselor, Master Step One.
So moved. Second.
I believe Moats should have an asterisk, as that's one of the new positions. And I think Jacob Houston is an asterisk. Uh, I believe that's the new ED unit at the middle school, so those were on the original staffing plan, as well as the, uh, revised one this evening. And just for people watching at home, uh, Jenny Lynn Hare, our art teacher at BWI, is moving to the high school. So voluntarily, she is not leaving the district, uh, so that created a vacancy for Megan Walsh.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Eleven point seven, it is recommended the board approve the following adjustments. Christina Simmons, Big One High School Food Services, from five hours a day to six hours a day, effective beginning the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second. Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Eleven point eight, it is recommended the board approve the following unpaid leave of absence. Adriana Nipper, Big One High School Science Teacher, September twenty-two and twenty through the twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-three. Carly Breschenhan, GRE Kindergarten Teacher for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So moved. Second. Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
I, I have a question.
Hold up a minute.
On the kindergarten teacher that's taken the entire year off, so what is the goal there to get a long-term sub for that year, or how does that work to cover that class?
So we would, uh, do that under normal circumstances, but based on our kindergarten enrollment, as of right now, we don't need as many teachers, so we'll be able to absorb that position as of right now. If that's not the case, then we would hire someone essentially on a one-year contract.
So wouldn't, so I think, Mrs. Nix, you would not, to clarify, you would not be hiring a long-term sub. You would be hiring somebody on a limited contract for the period of the year?
It, it really depends. We would start with trying to find a long-term sub, but in all honesty, because of the pay, uh, it's unlikely that we would find someone. We found ourselves in that position with a high school Spanish- We found ourselves in that position with a high school Spanish position, uh, this past year. So, um, we would start with a long-term sub, but if we needed to make it a position, we would. But with the knowledge that it was going to be a one-year position. Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes. Eleven point nine, it is recommended the board approve up to the following extended days as needed for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. As listed on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
This list, uh, increased, did it not, after the agenda review?
I think the additions were the two or were the four elementary counselors. So we have not, the elementary counselors have not had extended days in the past. But with this being the first year of us having one in each building, we wanted to make sure we gave them two days. Typically, the counselors get the extended days to get ready for the upcoming school year with student schedules. That's not the typical, uh, duty of an elementary counselor. And it would not be the plan moving forward to continue the, uh, extended days for the elementary counselors after this year. But we wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page. Uh, with the principals, this, this was on the, the principals were on the original agenda and the explanation was not the only principal in our district that works a, a complete year. Uh, contract-wise, I, I think everyone works a complete year, but, uh, two-hundred-and-sixty-day contract is the high school principal. So when we have a late resignation at the elementary or any of the other levels, uh, the principal's coming in and they're not being compensated for that spending time interviewing candidates and such. So we wanted to make sure that if that were the case, we weren't asking people to work for free. So they have up until, up to five, that doesn't necessarily mean they would use all five.
Right.
I, I was looking at the twenty, twenty days.
Well, for the high school counselors, it's wrapping up the end of the school year and then just the sheer amount of schedules and changes and all of that fun stuff leading up to the school year.
We'll have to hire some AI.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Item twelve, scheduling of the next board meeting. The next regularly scheduled meeting is June the twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, seven-thirty AM District Administration Office.
Can we get Tim Horton sponsored?
Uh, well, did we want to discuss the seven-thirty AM?
Yeah, let's discuss it.
Okay.
God, let's discuss.
I'm happy to discuss it, absolutely. Hey.
Same day, diff, maybe a possible different time. What do you, what your?
I'm a fan of mornings.
You what?
I'm a fan of morning.
I wouldn't mind it going till about nine. I will be coming back from England the day before. I'll be getting in late.
Okay.
So if I could get an extra twenty minutes of sleep, that'd be groovy.
Groovy.
Yeah, a, a little bit later would be good for me getting.
Later than nine?
Oh, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying about.
Oh, yeah, no, nine would be better.
That work for you?
Sure.
Must be like ESP because in my calendar, I have the board meeting at nine.
There we go.
I have it ending at.
That's AI.
I have it ending at ten-thirty, so that's.
It's coming through all the waves here.
That's funny.
So we'll move that until nine AM. I might be able to make nine. Seven-thirty's a bit much. Item thirteen, executive session. Under one-two-one-point-two-two, ORC, it is recommended the board enter executive session as permitted. That's already wrote in there. By ORC, section one-two-one-point-two-two, to discuss details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for the Board of Education to consider the confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategies, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance or to negotiate, negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting your request for economic development assistance to consider the employment of a public employee or official and to confer with an attorney for the Board of Education concerning disputes involving the board that are the subject of pending or immediate court action.
So moved.
Second.
When in executive session at eight eighteen.